Okay, today is Tuesday, September ninth, 2025. I call the Village Board meeting order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Bush?
Here.
Trustee Frankie?
Here.
Trustee Jerish?
Here.
Trustee Laskin?
Here.
Trustee Miller?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here. Okay, all board members are present tonight. Tonight, we have the invocation from Adnan, correct? Adnan, from the Dalwadi Bora Muslim place of faith here in Elk Grove. Many people don't realize, we do have a Muslim place of faith here in Elk Grove. It's right there by Munchies for Nurgi Road there. And... Marino's, sorry. Marino's, um, close enough. It says Marino's here. Right here in Elk Grove. And it's quite an honor to have that. So, Adnan, if you want to go on up? Everyone, please rise.
In the name of Allah, the most compassionate, the most merciful, would you be, Craig B. Johnson, the members of the board, esteemed guests, on behalf of the Dalwadi Bora community, I thank you for the opportunity to open tonight's meeting to the moment of reflection. Oh, all mine, gathered in gratitude for the question of community and opportunity to serve the people of Elk Grove. Thank you for this board, for our neighbors' accepting background, and for shared purpose that brings us together in this chamber's background. Grant these honorable leaders wisdom grounded in justice and mercy, clearly free of bias and patience that listens before judgment. Guide them to weigh ideas carefully, to speak truth with humility, to be steadfast yet gentle, and to uphold the dignity of every resident. Inspire us all to serve with integrity and passion and excellence to seek the common good, to strengthen the bond of neighborliness, and to protect the vulnerable. Bless this village with prosperity that is shared, streets that are safe, homes that are peaceful, institutions that are trustworthy. Let fairness roll through decisions like a cleansing stream, and let our cooperation reflect the unity, worship, learning, and service that our faith calls to us to abide. All luck. Keep our hearts humble and our hearts ready to help. Make tonight's deliberation a means of benefit for all. Ameen.
Thank you. Please remain standing at flags to my right will do the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Folks, please see, Adnan, hang on a second. Did you see the folks?
First off, thanks for being here tonight. Greatly appreciate it. And to your lovely wife and Dr. Merchant, we've got some chocolates for you to take. And thank you again for the nice gifts. I appreciate very nice stuff. We thank you for this.
Thank you so much.
And a couple more of that. Oh, I mentioned that here, didn't I? Oh, boy. We appreciate, and again, thanks for being part of our community.
Thank you.
The diversity of Elk Grove is great. The addition of more we have, the better community we have. So, thank you for that.
Sure. I appreciate it. Thank you. Sure.
Okay. With that said, we have the approval of the minutes of August 12th, 2025?
I'm... I make a motion, we approve the minutes of August 12th, 2025, and dispense with the reading.
We have a motion by trustee Frankie, second by trustee Jerish. And with... Um, hang on, no, we'll call on them, just to be sure. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, let the record show, yes, approve. I just want to make sure we have the date right. Okay, now move on to Mayor and Board of Trustees' report. We do have a presentation, two presentations tonight, we'll get to in a second. Before that, let everyone know, anyone goes by this Elk Grove Cemetery, we've been talking about that now for a few months. They are done restoring all the tombstones. You go down on Arnton's Road, you will not recognize that cemetery. The oldest one I found is 1848. It's right up near the front, which makes sense. First one buried there, probably pulled it off State Road, walked up there, buried it, and it grew from there. But they did a phenomenal job. The company was out of Indiana. They would come up on Monday morning or Sunday night, stay at a hotel nearby till Friday night, they would go back home. It took them six and a half weeks to get that work done. They did an unbelievable job. The neatest thing is finding two and three tombstones each grave. I think I told you all about that. So, I mean, they got them all standing up there and stuff. Same person? Yeah, same person, they just...
It's a condominium.
Yeah, no, they didn't stack the bodies. That's down in New Orleans in Savannah, Georgia. They do that, they stack them, but not there.
Who took the trees out? The trees.
They trimmed the trees, we trimmed the trees, and we took out some bad ones. And now it's more open, you can see better, save the trees. Next, Ken, I know Ken Jay's working on, next we got the fencing coming. That'll be next, the fence. And then the lights, the flagpole, and then the road will be done next spring. So, if you're all ready and set to go, and the tollway finished their work. All that work for the water issue. The water was coming off so much, it was undermining the graves underneath. And remember, we raised the money. We raised the money from private donations here in the business park. They came through, big time. So, we're well. Next, uh, we got, I did a show, not with trustee Frankie, but with Sue Heaton, talking about Oktoberfest, I know you're going to talk about soon. I had a chance to talk about that for TV. Parade at a meeting, we're all set, we've got one more meeting. The parade will be on Saturday of Oktoberfest, September 20th at 2:00 PM. Remember, the kids' fest right afterwards. Also, on August 26th, Matthew and I had a chance to meet with the president of 211, 214, 59, 54, the Park District, the library, the township, and... That's it. That's it. And their directors or superintendents. And first time we had a luncheon together, and it was great. It was just open conversation about different ideas, different areas. And it's something we're going to be doing, they all want to do on a regular basis, so we'll keep going on that. So, we appreciate that opportunity. Also, as everyone knows, this last Thursday, we had a town hall meeting, hosting Alexium Brothers came to talk about some changes going on at the hospital. And other thing, we got an opportunity to ask about the emergency room, improvements they're going to be making there, radiology reports, other things, they're going to be making changes. They explained their thoughts behind moving maternity out of Alexium Brothers. I know they bothered some, some are fine. So, it was, I do give Alexium Brothers a lot of credit. That was not an easy meeting to come to, but they did show up, all the top people, including Polly Davenport, the CEO, and the head doctor, and explained. So, if you want to see what happened, it's long, it's like three hours, watch Channel 6, we'll be showing it over the next while. And remember, a week from today, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM, if you want to give your input before the state board, you can come right into the Village Hall Council chambers. They'll be here to take your statement. You have up to two minutes. There will be no give and take, back and forth. They just hear your statement, they record it, and pass it on to the board. So, that's right here, next Tuesday, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. Post office. Mr. Rowan is trying to set up a meeting with me and the post manager general for this area. They were disappointed their activity of recent would be an understatement. We had letters, we went out to, 15,000 letters, go out to every household in Elk Grove, talking about the town hall. It was dropped off on a Monday. Our people went back, the next Monday, it was still sitting on the dock. Our newsletters. Trustee Frankie and I got our newsletters, after some events that were in the newsletter, already occurred. People are having a hard time. So, that's not what we expect out of the post office, that's, I'm sure, what they expect to be doing. So, our hope is to have a meeting with them, find out what's going on, and hopefully get it resolved. It's not what we expect and it won't accept either as time goes on. Uh, next.
Go on Channel 6, we're having trouble hearing you.
Hello?
They're lucky.
Better? Okay. Maybe that'd be better, it's too far away.
They're lucky.
Also, mind everyone, our tree lighting's coming up the Friday after Thanksgiving. But we got, is that, I don't know if that's on our agenda tonight or not. This year, we will have a half a million, over 500,000 lights around the village hall. Half a million. Matter of fact, Mr. Knickerbocker, one of the last things he's going to do for the village is he'll be out there counting every single one and putting a number on it. One, two, then three.
Won't that take a long time?
Not for me. So, looking forward to that, that's coming up soon. And also in November, we'll be announcing, and we'll announce the band probably next board meeting or the first one in October for the tree lighting. And November, we'll be announcing our concert lineup for 2026, our 70th anniversary year. It will be a lineup that you will not want to miss. Also, our business park, we just got the latest rankings. Remember, there's Business Facilities Magazine ranks business parks in the country. In 2022, we were the number one business park in the country. 2023, we're number one business park in the country. 2024, last year, we fell off a little bit. We were the eighth best business park in the country. Well, we're proud to announce in 2025, we're working our way back up. We are ranked the third best business park in America. So, for the last four years, we've been in the top 10. Three out of four years, top three. So, our business park, as we say, is the best of the best. It's the biggest in North America, and it is still serving the needs of everyone here in the community and the northwest suburbs and beyond. Next, Ripple, as you know, they're going through the village, putting in new fiber optics. It could be luck, it could be whatever. Has any trustees gotten any complaints from anybody yet about Ripple? What was your complaint?
They drilled through my power cable.
Oh, it's you, we don't care about you. Anybody get from anyone that counts outside trustee Frankie?
It was fixed.
None? Well, I gotta say, to Ripple's credit, they have been doing a phenomenal job. Show you how far they went. We called saying, if you done an area, can we take the flags out of our yard now? You know, the flags for markings and stuff. And they said, oh yeah, your area's done. The next day, two guys from Ripple came to my house. Again, they have no clue who I am. I never told, they never told. They came, Kevin and Rolando, came and took the flags out of my yard. Because we had called, asking, can we take them? They came and did that. They had no clue. I asked them, I said, you know who you are? No, sir, we just told, come 275 Smithwick, the flags need to be removed. I said, okay, thank you. I mean, that's the quality. We've dealt with so many contractors, so many different utilities over all these years. They have been, knock on wood, phenomenal. They've been beyond belief. So, there are miracles still. Almost done, Mr. Frankie. Next. As everyone knows, we are applying to get affordable rental senior housing at the old Dr. Riggs location, right there on Arnton's Road, right behind Tepuppa. And Richard and his group put in, back, oh, I think in September of last year, put in a bid for it. There was almost 70 places applied for funding from the state. Only 16 got picked, and unfortunately, they were not one of them. So, tonight, we're announcing that the board is extending our agreement with them for one more year, them trying again for the funding, and they'll be putting in for it. And hope is, next July, we'll get better success, and we'll get the funding for the affordable senior housing right there in the heart of the village. And we wish Richard and his group the best of luck on that. Last, but not least, we want to thank all the sponsors for, the tier one sponsors, the bigger sponsors for our parade coming up, so I'm going to go through it quickly. Advertising Products, Inc., Alexium Brothers Congregation, this is the actual brothers from Alexium, Arc Glass of Chicago, Inc., Onings by ZipD, Big Sammy's Hot Dogs, who doesn't love Big Sammy's? Brittany's Bistro, Builders Asphalt, Chicago Offset, Diamond Truck and Trailer, DRC Heat Transfer, EGM Automotive, Elk Grove Optical, Fisher Commercial Construction, FPM Heat Treating LLC, George Gallow Development, GNP Realty Partners, Great Clips, Groot Industries, InterLab, Inc., J&amp;K Cabinetry, Materials Science Corporation, Medeco Corporation, Muro Dojo, North Star Foods, Our Lady of the Blessed Sacrament, Pole Position, Rebicini Studios, Ripo Fiber, oh, I didn't know they did it, SG Cross and Company doing business at Kraus Steel, San Kelsa USA, Sunoco Products Corporation, Surrin Torn and Recovery, Tacos El Bombbrero, Inc. Are they up on...
Are they on Bussie? Dell, you said?
Tacos El Bombbrero. Are they the one on, trying to think, because they're the ones on Bussie.
They're not the one that's by Office Depot.
Oh, they're not, okay. And, but they're great, I'm sure. And Truck Tire Express. So, we want to thank those Elk Grove companies for stepping up to help us with our parade coming up. Now, Mr. Frankie, that's it.
That was very good. When you said 500 million?
Five hundred thousand.
Thousand?
Almost a half a million, like I said.
Okay. Well, I thought you were talking about who saw our concerts, 500,000 people.
Oh, 500 million.
Ah, okay.
Okay. Darryl, why don't you come on down and join me? Okay. People may recognize Darryl, may not. This is Darryl Pass, he worked with Kenneth Young Center. But as we all know, Elk Grove's got a recovery program to help people fight the disease of addiction. Again, the disease of addiction. And that's called the Elk Grove Cares. And this year, we're actually honoring the cares program at our parade coming up. But this, it's perfect timing because this is a special month. And I'm not speaking out of turn here. This gentleman standing next to me, Darryl, was a drug addict. He was a drug addict, 40 years?
We talked about that stigma labeling.
That's not stigma labeling.
Yeah, it is.
That's a man that's overcome it.
Yeah, but it's substance use.
Okay, substance abuse.
Yes.
Okay. Substance abuse. But this is a man that overcame, what, 40 years? How many years?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three years battling the disease of addiction. Battling the disease of addiction. And Darryl beat it. Wasn't easy. Failed many times.
Absolutely.
But kept going back and fighting. That's why Elk Grove Cares program exists. We're there to help people fight the disease of addiction. And in Elk Grove, we don't care how many times you come back. The average addict would take seven times before he beats it. Elk Grove does have a three-strike rule. If it's seven times, if it's nine times, 10 times, we're there for you. We're there to help you. And Darryl's living proof. And all that time, he's an Elk Grove resident, raised his family here. And he's been through it firsthand. And so proud to have Darryl now working and helping those battling the same disease he battled, beat the disease. So, September is recovery month. So, we tonight have a special proclamation for Darryl, and it's called the Elk Grove Village Proclamation Recovery Month, September 2025. Whereas substance use disorder affects individuals, families, and communities across the nation, and whereas recovery from substance use disorders is our essential part of health and one's overall wellness, and whereas by commemorating the strength and commitment of people in recovery and by recognizing the many ways people find recovery, we can counter misconceptions and stigmas associated with substance use disorders. And whereas the 2025 National Recovery Month theme, every person, every family, every community, emphasizes that recovery is possible for everyone, and that support, access to treatment, and community understanding are essential. And whereas Elk Grove Village is committed to supporting those on a path to recovery through local program, resources, and outreach efforts. And whereas Elk Grove Village Cares Program has made significant impact in our community, providing critical support and outreach to individuals and families affected by substance use with 458 connections made to date with individuals ranging from 15 years old to 76. And whereas Elk Grove Village works closely with a network of trusted treatment providers, including Rosecrantz, Gateway Foundation, the SHARE Program, Kenneth Young Center, and a bridge back to ensure individuals receive the comprehensive care they need. And whereas the village has taken proactive steps to prevent overdose and save lives by increasing the access to life-saving medication through our Narcan dispensing machine at Village Hall, from which approximately 654 units of Narcan have already been dispensed to the community. And whereas Elk Grove Village believes that recovery is possible, and every person deserves the opportunity to live a healthy, safe, and fulfilling life. Now therefore, I, Mayor Craig B. Johnson, and the Board of Trustees of Elk Grove Village and the College of Cook County Page, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the month of September as Recovery Month, day of this ninth day, September 2025. Darryl, all yours.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson, for this auspicious award, and I appreciate the board as well. I accept this, not just on my behalf, but for all the hard work from my organization, colleagues there at Kenneth Young Center. We all do our best as a social service organization to be, in fact, impactful in the community with those who struggle with not just substance use, but we have a seniors program, we have clinical services, we have outpatient, we do a plethora of things to assist in ways that we can. And I'd just like to say that, as this was written, our statistics show that that machine in the lobby was placed in June of 2024. Since then, as of September 3rd, there are 22 overdose reversals reported to that machine alone. We are the only organization in Illinois that has 10 of these vending machines throughout Cook County. In addition to that, in that machine alone, we have dispensed 1,117 units of Narcan. That's phenomenal, right here in Elk Grove. So, again, I want to thank Mayor Johnson, the council members here in Elk Grove for supporting this initiative. Because I'll tell you something about substance use. It transcends race, creed, color, any of that, economic status. And a lot of times, we believe that because of our zip code, that we are exempt from being impacted by substance use. I'm sure some of you in this room right now have people who struggle with some level of substance or trauma. So, when I was speaking to the mayor about stigma, we have to be careful about that. Because I once, I don't look like what I've been through. I was once one of those individuals. However, 13 years removed from that adversity, and it's my mission, passion, and purpose to assist those who still struggle and need that hand up. So, thank you.
Well, before you go... He talks about the 22 cases we can dictate being used on people. Understand why that's so important. Because when people come out from an overdose, first thing they do is they get pissed off. Our guys can prioritize, they're pissed off because you took them out of the high. But then, right after that, they seek help. That's when they help. All of our guys and ladies are trained to be prepared to give them the assistance they want. That's why Elk Grove Cares program is so unique. We don't care if you have drugs on you. We'll take them, we'll counsel, we'll get rid of them. We don't care if you don't, but if you come in for help, we don't, we're not there to arrest you. We can't arrest a problem. We have to help you out of this problem. And that's why we don't arrest anyone, we help them. You come in, we'll find you a place, whether it's share or Gateway, whatever, we'll find you a place. If you have insurance, it pays for it. If you don't have insurance, we pay for it. The village will pay for it. And we don't stop there. When you come out of your rehab place, we'll find you a place to go, we'll find you a job. We still have a business at Elk Grove. That anyone goes through Elk Grove Cares program, goes through the program, they'll give a job to. And there's people working that company, I'll say it is, Tasty Catering. They, still, people working that went through our program, to this day. We're there 100% with you. We don't forget about you after we drop you off somewhere. We stay in touch with you. That's why our parade's going to be neat, because Darryl's going to be there. Talia and Kristen, from our Public Works, uh, social workers, will be there. But Des Rafferty, our original social worker, is going to be at the parade. And Mike Asparia, a former deputy chief, who helped start our Elk Grove program, cares program with us, oversaw for years, he's going to be there too. So, we got five people that are truly the faces of this community in its battle against addiction. And again, it's the disease of addiction. No one wakes up, I guarantee Darryl didn't wake up one and said, hey, you know what? I'm becoming an addict today, I got nothing else to do. Doesn't happen that way, folks. It's a disease. No different than when I had bypass surgery. I have heart disease. But we have cancer. No one wants it, but we don't turn our back on cancer heart patients. But for some reason, we turn our back on the addicts. We can't no more. Because they affect all of our lives. For you people who think, oh, it's self-inflicted, then do it for yourself. What, about 95% of our car break-ins are addicts looking for quick cash for a quick fix? Yeah? That's what happens. So, do it for your own safety and your own saving your money from your car getting broken. Whatever it takes to get on board with us, I don't care. We want you on board. And Elk Grove Cares program is working. It is making a difference. And we're going to keep pushing. And with guys like Darryl partnering with us, and Kenneth Young working with us, we are spreading the word, we're getting the message out. And remember, it's Darryl that came up with that Narcan dispensing machine. So, right now, 22 people are alive today that wouldn't have been alive before because of the actions Darryl thought of and did by getting that machine here in Elk Grove. That's just Elk Grove's machine. So, we can make a difference.
Absolutely.
And God meant you for a purpose.
Wow.
God saved you for a purpose. And you're delivering today that purpose. So, Darryl, thank you, my friend.
Appreciate you, man.
There, got some tough food to go home. You got a nice... There you go, my friend. There you go, my friend.
Look at this guy.
Take care.
Thank you.
We'll see ya. Thank you. Okay, chief? Michael, come on up. Make sure you get your papers all you're wearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, board members. Recently, the Elk Grove Village Fire Department was able to support personnel, support a mission from the Mutual Aid Box Alarm System of Illinois, better known as MABUS, to provide humanitarian efforts in another portion of the country. This evening, it's my pleasure to introduce two representatives for the Mutual Aid Box Alarm System, the Urban Search and Rescue Administrative Branch Chief, Chief Joe Moore, and the Urban Search and Rescue Operations Branch Chief, Chief Patrick Harden. They're going to elaborate on what the mission was and give us more information about that, and then they have some presentations to make as well. So, my pleasure to introduce Chief Joe Moore.
Chief? Thank you. Thank you, chief. So, on behalf of MABUS, we're here to help present an award to Lieutenant Christopher Schultz for his work in Texas. MABUS is here for a couple, and myself too, for a couple reasons. One, as a resident since 1971, it's always good to come back to Elk Grove and see the effect that the good services here have done, not only in Illinois, but across the nation and being involved in Illinois Task Force One, as well as that, one of the founding fathers of MABUS is the late Captain Don Keun from Elk Grove Village, who helped start MABUS. And it went from one division to now 69 divisions across the state of Illinois. And actually, every department within Illinois, except for about 12, belonged to MABUS Illinois. So, it's great to come back here and thank the village and the chief and the residents here for allowing us to borrow Lieutenant Schultz for a while for our trip to Texas. Illinois Task Force One is a Type 1 Urban Search and Rescue Team. We are accredited nationally to go out as an 80-person team to do search and rescue in Illinois and across the nation. For this mission, we went as a Type 3 team, which can be up to 40 personnel. In order to support that team, it takes 220 people from 62 different agencies across Illinois, Indiana, Iowa, and Wisconsin to make this team work. So, we don't function unless we have the support from various departments and agencies and cities and towns from across Illinois. To go out the door this time, to get the 39 people out the door, it took 26 different towns and agencies to support us to go out the door. So, we don't function unless we have the support from those who help make MABUS strong, and that's why we're here tonight. So, the first award we'd like to present is to the Elk Grove Village Fire Department, to Mayor Johnson and the trustees here, the MABUS Humanitarian Award, in appreciation for your support of the MABUS Task Force One. So on behalf of CEO Glenn Erickson and the Executive Board of MABUS Illinois, we'd like to thank Chief Michael and Mayor Johnson for your support.
And your family? As they're coming down, I've got a few words to say first. Thank you very much, it's an honor to stand here before you. I've got some experience with your chief, it's all been good. We've known each other for 30-plus years in the fire service, so I want to say thank you for all your support, and as well, you're in great hands with him and his leadership. He's got the vision that is definitely needed in the fire service. So I want to say thank you to all of you for the support. I'm gonna talk a little bit about what happened in early July. Some catastrophic things happened down in Texas, and Texas is a friend of Illinois as far as the urban search and rescue world. So they reached out to us, said, can you come down and help? So naturally, we tried to get a team together. Originally, we wanted a Type 1 team, but that was a little bit too much, and then it dwindled down to a 39-person team as a USAR Type 3. So sent everything out, who's available, they have to check with their bosses, make sure staffing, and we understand in MABUS how things go day-to-day with staffing. There's lots of issues trying to provide the service that we do. So we built the roster, Chris was on there, I was quite relieved seeing his name there. Chris is one of our medical managers, we don't have rank in the USAR team, we've got positions. So he's a hazmat manager that leads the hazmat group. So anything, any issue, they're there to make sure everyone goes home safe. They've got the monitors and everything else. He's top-notch at the level, that's the person we want out there making sure people come home safe. So thanks, Chris, for going down, keep my blood pressure a little bit low, I appreciate that. So, once they got in theater, they went into some devastating area, looking for some people and human remains. Not an easy tasking, wide area search, some of the areas in Big Creek, Big Shady Creek and Cow Creek, the first two locations they're at, they had some horrific scenery that they approached, some of the debris piles, trees, houses, everything else in between, off the riverbed, they had to go through, look, and try and find human remains and pass away people. So that's not an easy job, they stepped up, he did a fantastic job, helped lead that crew with squad, too, the best squad. So, did some great work, some of the beds they came across of debris piles 30 feet high, they had to go through looking for things. And so, again, horrific, hot, humid, terrible conditions, they had a work cycle of 40 minutes work, they had to stand down for 20 minutes, rehydrate, just so that they make it through the day. So again, the quality work that he performed, fantastic, and of course, with the Elk Grove Village Fire Department, we expect that, because that's the crew and that's the reputation you guys have for your members. So again, I say thanks. Some of the things that even were better with the, trying to heal the community, there was a, one of the chiefs passed away, and they were swept away with the floodwater. We got close to finding some of the vehicle parts, it was really an honor, then we handed it back to Texas, because they have to find their own, they don't want Illinois finding their own. So it was an honor to help provide that service to them, make them great, and make them whole again. When there was a ceremony, all of our staff wanted to go to it. I supported the mission, they called back, we're gonna go, they're gonna do a little scenario, they're gonna have a presentation for the chief that passed. So I supported 200%. Later on that night, I started getting pictures back from it. I see all our people smiling, having a great time at a rodeo. Blood pressure went high. Okay, how can I say, you know, to all the staff and the chiefs, they're at a rodeo? To find out, that's what they do in Texas, that's why Texas is that way, that's how they celebrate. So got some more words, my blood pressure went down, and explained it very easy, they're out celebrating, helping the community get better. So that, again, I say thank you, Chris. So if you can step up, I would like to present the humanitarian award. This is to certify that the President of the Mutual Aid Box Alarm System has the authority by executive direction and the order to be awarded Humanitarian Service Medal Flood Disaster State of Texas Response and Relief Effort to Christopher Schultz, Illinois Task Force One, for outstanding and sustained individual and team actions for the period of July 2025, in service within the state of Texas, flash flood disaster response and relief effort. Chris, thank you very much.
So I was asked to read a letter that our Task Force Leader, Steve Grossick, who is a member of the Chicago Fire Department, wrote to Chief Michael on behalf of Lieutenant Schultz. "I had this distinct honor and privilege of serving Task Force Leader for Illinois Task Force One during the recent deployment to Texas. I want to extend my sincere appreciation to you, the Elk Grove Village Fire Department and the village administration for the supporting this critical mission. I understand there are many challenges departments face when a member deploys, from adjusting manpower to covering their shifts, briefing village leaders and checking in on well-being of their deployed members' families. Please know that your efforts and support is greatly appreciated and do not go unnoticed. In credit to your department, the actions of Lieutenant Christopher Schultz exemplified the highest standards of our professional and represented Elk Grove Village Fire Department with outstanding professionalism and dedication. His can-do attitude was not only contagious among our team members, but also had a noticeable and positive impact on the other teams that we had the pleasure to work alongside with. Every challenge he faced was met with determination, resilience, and a willingness to go above and beyond without hesitation or complaint. This was absolutely critical in helping us build and strengthen the partnership that are essentials for successful joint operations such as this. I truly believe that Lieutenant Schultz's actions reflected the strength of your leadership and the high caliber of your department. He served as an exceptional ambassador for both the village of Elk Grove as well as the state of Illinois. Please accept my heartfelt thanks and appreciation for supporting our deployment and for sharing such an outstanding team member with us. Steve Grossick, Task Force Leader, One."
Thank you, Chief. So based on that letter we received from the Task Force Leader, we're also gonna award Lieutenant Chris Schultz with the Meritoria Service Award from the department, from the Elk Grove Village Fire Department, for your services that you rendered to the people of Texas during your deployment. So thank you for what you do, thank you for doing it well, thank you for representing us.
First off, middle of summer, down in Texas, humid, all that. How'd you get through it physically with the weather and all the rest?
To be honest, it was the group effort, the whole team that we were with, it just pushed everybody together, brought everybody together. You know, we got down to Texas, and right away, we were told it's gonna be 100 degrees, and you're gonna be out there with rattlesnakes and other issues, and right away, the management of the team, Steve and a couple other guys jumped on right away getting us gaiters to protect our ankles, water packs, stuff like that, stuff that we weren't prepared for, because this is a different environment than we've ever trained for. Normally, we're looking at going in collapses, shoring buildings, going on buildings. This was wide open, basic desert that we're walking through. So it was really just hydrating and really the camaraderie of the team. We got together right after and did a kind of a debrief a couple of last month, and in the debrief, everybody just kept saying, the 40-man team that went down there just has such a different respect and brotherhood amongst the 40 of us that went, that is hard to explain to anybody else, just because we spent 16 days in Texas searching for what ended up being, what we thought was 100 people, ended up being three, but we just worked diehard on finding what we could. And we found some personal effects and stuff, thankfully, nobody really found any human remains that caused any concerns for us, but we really wanted to help as much as we could.
Well, you make Elk Grove proud, we appreciate what you've done, just example of everyone that works for us in the department, and we thank you for willing, because it's a risk. Like you say, not just snakes, you can fall, things collapse, I mean, we do it, we greatly appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. So who you got here tonight with you?
My wife, who thankfully was okay with me disappearing for 15 days and raising our two madmen that you guys have seen running around here. It was a lot, and I can't thank her enough for being my rock at the house for that, because 15 days is a long time. My parents are back there, my mom and my dad, they stepped up a ton when I was gone and helped out with everything they could, and thankfully, it went well. So the last thing I want to say is, my boys had some struggles when we were down there, and I just want to personally thank Pat Harden one more time. He came out from my boys' ice cream, brought the local fire engine out, and really helped them get through me being gone for 15 days, which was something that I wasn't prepared for. So again, thank you very much for that.
What do I say, Elk Grove, we're family, and we take care of family, so you're good, don't worry, we're always there. Guys, come here, come here, guys, I've got something for you. You guys like chocolate? Hang on, no, take your hands, get your hands together, all these, I'll take that, all these yours, okay? Come here, buddy, don't forget ya. Okay, got your hands together? That's all for you, and I want to give you Dad more, because you gotta give it to Grandma and Grandpa and everyone around, okay? He's gonna make sure, your job is make sure all those guys get one too. So, tell you your thing, hang on. So, hang on, there's a lot back there. So, your next rescue mission, make sure they all get their candy. So, we all good? Okay, give them a big hand once again. Okay, guys, you good? Oh, wait, you guys too, come here, guys. We take care of everyone. There you go. Chief makes you proud.
Absolutely, absolutely.
If you folks want to go ahead and get going now, you're more than welcome to do so, thank you.
Let's see if that works, let me bring it a little closer, there we go. Just have like two quick things, just want to say, I attended the pickleball ribbon cutting, I thought it was just really great, they take it from you, I'm sorry.
No.
Oh, but you were, yeah, but you were there, and the mayor was there, and it was a really good time, it was my first time playing pickleball, and I lost pretty bad, and it's a hard sport, I'll be back. I gotta win eventually. Last thing I want to say is the Fire Citizens Academy, right now, I'm about three weeks into it, there's, I believe there's three more weeks left over. It's been phenomenal, actually, Chief Michael, he left, but pretty much it's a phenomenal program. I attended the Police Citizens Academy, also the Public Works Citizens Academy, great job on both of those as well. So if anybody ever sees that, you'll go to the website, wherever, I highly recommend to attend any of them, they are phenomenal, you learn a lot about our community. One thing I do want to mention about the Fire Systems Academy, you do hear a lot about, like, we're the only, or we're the first on a lot of things, so, you know, we have phenomenal EMS staff and the equipment that they have, and it's just, it's just a remarkable thing on the knowledge they have, the commitment, the camaraderie, it's a really amazing time. So, so thank you, that's my report.
Thank you. Trustee Jerash.
No report.
Trustee Schmidt.
I have two things, on the 27th, attended the Jawa meeting, now we're looking at, making sure we have enough water into the next decade, and there'll be more information coming out in the future. And also, on the, last night, we had a Sister Cities meeting with our student exchange families. We have 14 students that are going to be hosting some students from our sister city in November, so we're gonna be here, we'll have them at the tree lighting ceremony, and the students are very excited, Principal Kelly and the teachers were there last night, and everybody is very excited about having our 14th exchange, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Jeffrey Charles Flankie.
I just want to mention that the Oktoberfest and parade are coming up, which the mayor talked about, the 19th and 20th of September. Just one important thing is the discount tickets are on sale now, you can get them off the line, you come to Village Hall, or you should have got a postcard that you can use a QR code to get some, right to the site, or go to the village website, but you save 20% if you buy before September 16th, at 11:59 PM is when discounts stop. So you pay $10, you get, or I'm sorry, you get 10 tickets for $8, and they're worth a dollar each, so buy them up early.
And it's a great, that's a great deal, plus we discount the food prices, the village, so between the 20% off on tickets and the discount we give, it's a very fair...
It's a great value.
Yes, very good.
And of course, with the families coming on Saturday after the parade, we've got a few changes, we made, added a few more things to it, so I think the family is really gonna love it, we changed the backdrop, instead of just faces where you put, we're putting actually a, say, almost a Thanksgiving kind of display where you can actually take family pictures if you want to use it for postcards or something like that. So it's, we have some very good staff that takes care of things, so, so that's all I have.
Very good. Trustee Miller.
Thank you. I have...
Oh, sorry, we're sharing.
Yeah. I have been working with the Historical Society on a project for next year for our 70th anniversary, and they are getting ready for one of their big events, and that is Pioneer Day, so I wanted to mention that. If you see that as you drive down Beasterfield on Saturday, this Saturday, September 13th, you will see reenactments, you will see churning butter and all of that wonderful stuff. So I told the Historical Society I would mention that. I also want to give a shout-out to the Elk Grove Family Dental, I don't know if anybody can see this, this is the Free Dental Day that Dr. Holman puts out, and they have done this for several years now, many years, and I think last year, they did something like $47,000 worth of dental work, but this year, it is going to be on September 26th, it's a Friday, from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM at their dental office, which is 8 East Avon Avenue here in Elk Grove Village. Patients are seen on a first-come, first-serve basis, they cannot guarantee how many patients will be seen, but it's designed for those with a pressing issue who do not have access to regular dental care. So again, that is Friday, September 26th, at Elk Grove Family Dental, and he gives back, several dentists give back to the community for this wonderful cause.
And kids is here too.
This year, they do have a pediatric dentist who will be joining the team that will treat children under the age of 12, but they can't guarantee a lot more than seven spots for those pediatric kids, so it's just a wonderful, wonderful program. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Bush.
First of all, I want to say thank you to both Brian and Jared, who just handle problems so quickly. There was a storm several weeks ago, and one of my friends who works at Elk Grove High School texted me, and I said, I'm not coming to cut down your tree, but if you call Public Works, and she said, within an hour, they were there taking care of it, and it's just phenomenal, and we saw some of the pictures and stuff. And, you know, as trustees, sometimes we get random texts, and I got one, another one that I passed on to Jared, who dealt with a safety issue, so I just want to thank the responsiveness for our teams. The See Click Fix, is that what it's called, like, they just, they take care of things right away, so we really appreciate that. As a town, you know, I hear people who live in other towns, and they have nothing like this, and you guys just make it happen, so I appreciate both of you and all of your departments and everyone that is responsive to those things. And then my other report is, we're currently doing our serial, annual serial drive, serial collection for the Elk Grove Township Food Pantry, and this is a friendly competition between Elk Grove High School and Rolling Meadows. Last year, between the two schools, we collected 7,000 boxes, which was, I think, 4,000 more than the previous year. So the competition has ramped up, and we're looking for donations which can be made at Elk Grove High School, also Johnson Insurance, Berkshire Hathaway, First American Bank,
Jen, call the roll, please.
Trustee Bush.
Aye.
Trustee Frankie.
Aye.
Trustee Jerish.
Aye.
Trustee Laskin.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt.
Motion passes 6-0. What's going on here?
Her thing is echoing so bad, so I got to give her mine.
So I'm also using hers.
Oh, okay, okay. We have September 9th, 2025?
I make a motion we pay the accounts payable warrant for September 9th, 2025 for $880,870.72. Any questions, comments from any board members or staff?
Anybody in the audience on the consent agenda? Seeing none, hearing none, and without objection, record the vote, please demonstrate, 6 to nothing. There are, bear with me, no items under regular agenda? Plan Commission, Zoning Board, Mr. Matt Jerome.
Sure, we have no items under Plan Commission, one item under the Zoning Board of Appeals. On August 21st, the Zoning Board of Appeals met to hear ZBA doc at 25-6 with petition seeking a variation as it pertains to permitted locations for fences in residential zoning districts for property at 924 Willshire Avenue. It was the consensus of the Zoning Board of Appeals by an 8-0 vote to do grant the requested variation to permit the installation of the fence.
Okay, the residents here tonight? Okay, sorry I had to wait so long, I apologize. Hopefully, Mr. Knickerbocker's entertaining for you. Do trustees have any questions, concerns? If not, can I have a motion to have the attorney prepare necessary documents?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Bush, second by trustee Miller. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, not to act show any admittance approval. Folks, you're all set. We will approve this in two weeks. You do not need to return. It'll be formally approved, be on consent agenda. We thank you for working with the Zoning Board and working with the Village for your improvements. We thank you for investing in the Village to make it better. Appreciate that. We wish you luck. If you want to go ahead and get started now, before it's formally adopted, you have our permission, just work with Jared's department, and he'll get you the permits whenever necessary. But we do thank you again for coming tonight. We appreciate you being here, and thank you for being part of Elk Grove.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anything else, Mr. Matt Jerome?
That's it.
Okay. We work on Recycling and Waste Committee, trustee Jeffrey Charles Flanky.
No report.
Judiciary Plan and Zoning Committee, trustee Bush.
No report.
Cable Improvement Committee, trustee Schmidt.
Yes, on September 4th, the committee met with staff to get a sneak preview, so to speak, of a five-year plan that the staff is working on. It's a work in progress, and we're looking forward to seeing the final documents soon. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Cable Intelligence Committee, trustee Laskin.
No report.
Youth Committee, trustee Bush.
No report.
Information Committee, trustee Miller. We gave her a lot.
You know, I have a report. So, we have a new community notification system that notifies you for non-emergency, time-sensitive information. It's called NotifyEGV. We encourage all residents to enroll. You can register your phone number or and/or your email address to receive notices. NotifyEGV is not a replacement for emergency alerts, but it's a complementary to them. So, please check it out on our website. You can fill out the information via our website if you go to the tab that says being connected. Another item for information is, starting effective November 1st, Groot will have an increase 62 cents every month for your bill of waste, your waste, and so for a three-month bill, it'll only increase $1.86 for that increase. And then finally, we've been harvesting honey. This is the second year that we've done that, and we started harvesting honey, like, last year we did 70 pounds, is that correct?
Yep.
And this year is 111 pounds, and most of that food goes to the food pantry, but is it Bill? Correct me if it's Bill. He only has gotten stung once, is that right? Isn't that amazing? And he's loving it. It's his passion. So, congratulations on the honey harvest. That concludes...
That's a lot of honey.
That's a lot of honey.
111 pounds, that's a lot of honey. So, are you guys really enjoying? The honeybees are sitting over by the Meacham Road Public Works facility, right there, because it backs up to a park, gives you an open space. Are you guys enjoying that?
It's fun, general.
Yeah?
Yeah, it's great.
Okay, and only one sting?
Last year.
None this year?
None with our staff.
Well, that's pretty neat. It's amazing how much they can produce by doing something like that. Well, thank you for that, and I know the food pantry appreciates it. Thank you, trustee Miller. Business Leaders Forum, trustee Schmidt.
Yes, trustee Miller, trustee Gerus, and I and staff attended several ribbon cuttings. One was on the 13th of August at the World's Best Movers on Bonnie Lane, New Moving Company Town, and the other on the 14th was the Kevlar Dental Services on Ergie Road. They specialize in oral surgery. And we also had a ambassador visit on the 21st of August at Forest Packaging. It was a very interesting visit to talk about how things are packaged and that you don't realize how much work goes into it. In fact, trustee Miller has a demonstration for us.
Oh, I was just going to be Vanna, but that's okay.
Okay, you can be Vanna tonight.
Okay, so, they make sure everything comes out flat, but they are specializing in 3D boxes and also display cases. And this happens to be a box that they use as a giveaway when they present like mints or things like inside a box for their giveaways. This is very difficult to do, but this is the way it comes out. So it is, it has a cutting piece, plus it has a three-color display. It has their name on it, Forest Packaging. I still haven't gotten it put together yet, but you want to show them the finished product?
Yes, we do have the finished product here, and we have a finished product here with some things in it, and that's to present this to Mayor Johnson on behalf of Forest Packaging. There you go. And that concludes our report for business leaders.
Steve, I'd just like to add one other thing on Forest Packaging. They've been working with the CCC, the Community Character Coalition, and they have donated many boxes to many different service organizations and opportunities for our jean drive last year, for our shoe drive, to ship things, you know, all over the world. So, very community-based organization as well.
And they also make boxes for packages for patriots. They also did the boxes for the bag, the school supplies. So, they're amazing. They give back to the community.
Very involved in the community.
Very much so.
Okay, that concludes our report.
Thank you. And it was not money, it was some mints.
Okay, I didn't look inside. I didn't look inside.
Health and Community Services, trustee Jerish.
So I have three quick things this evening. Pads, Public Action to Deliver Shelter, needs volunteers again this season, which will begin on Sunday, October 5th, and run through the end of April. They are looking for food drop-off kitchen teams, the first shift helpers from 6:00 to 11:00, second shift, 11:00 to 3:00, third, 3:00 AM to 7:00, and a cleanup crew. Please visit the website for Christus Victor Lutheran Church, so it's www.cvlutheran.org/pads, and you can get more information and sign up. Second item, I know this is a couple months off, but it'll be here before you know it, our last and final blood drive of the year. Put it on your calendars, December 6th. There'll be more information forthcoming. And then Farmer's Market is still in session until the end of October, the second and fourth Saturdays of each month. So this coming Saturday, September 13th, please check it out. Its location is on Arlington Heights Road in the Christus Victor Lutheran parking lot across from the movie theater. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
This whole time, they're trying to fold the box. Oh, you got it.
Hey, way to go. Good job.
How many trustees did it take to...
How many boxes did I fold as a bakery lady? And you guys are sitting there struggling.
Okay, Personnel Committee, trustee Schmidt.
No report.
No airport report at this time. Parade Committee, we discussed earlier, they'll be coming up soon. Midsummer Council Classic Series, hopefully in November. Special events, our next one would be Oktoberfest. No report of Liquor Commission, report from Village Manager.
No report.
Report from Village Clerk.
No report.
And unfinished business, all of Mr. Knickerbocker, everything gone?
Yeah.
Now, just so everyone knows, Mr. Knickerbocker, who's been our village attorney for 54 years, longer than any board member's been alive up here, long time, he's down to just two meetings after tonight. Two meetings, Mr. Knickerbocker.
This is a good deal.
For who?
Well, we could go anywhere with that one.
Now, we still got two more, looking forward to it, but we're going from three strikes now, or one strike gone, two more to go. So, good job. Paul Carlsen is ready to come out. Just got to say, he gone. So, but you're going to miss me, aren't you?
Oh, yeah. I mean, yeah, of course.
Lot of ears. So, okay, any new business ideas from board members tonight? Anybody, Mr. Emoni, his shoes will wake you up?
No, I've got a wig.
Everything good? Working out tomorrow morning? If you remember, unfortunately, who predicted yesterday at the Fitness Center, Minnesota and the over? Unfortunately, I was right on both. That was tough. Okay, so we'll see you tomorrow morning? Okay. Ma'am, anything we can help you with? Questions, concerns?
Well, I just was trying to link to the NotifyEGV, and I can't get it to go through. I tap on the link and it goes somewhere.
Caroline will help you after we're done here. Caroline will help you. She'll get it done.
Then we're done.
We're good? Anything else? Okay, well, glad you came by tonight. Caroline, make sure you grab a couple chocolates for her, and we take care of that too. Okay, with that said, by the way, a good officer back there, two weeks?
Two weeks.
Two weeks from tomorrow, or today, he runs his first marathon.
Ooh.
So, wish him luck. What town is that in?
It's going to be in St. Charles.
St. Charles, a marathon, 26 miles.
That's what we feel we go through when he speaks.
But you know why I know he's going to do great?
Why?
He's a wrestler.
Of course.
He refs the Grove Tournament with me every year. He's a former wrestler. That's why you know he's going to exceed beyond belief on that. Actually, next year, I may need him for a tag team partner if I do it again. So, okay, with all that's...
Cut the hammer.
I am, I got to toss this out. Okay, all that said, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, who said the motion? Trustee Bush, second trustee Jerish. Jen, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Bush.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Laskin.
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt.
Aye.
Trustee Jerish.
Aye.
Trustee Frankie.
Aye.
Now, hang on a second. Jared, Brian, stand up for a second.
Stand up?
Stand up. Look how sharp both of them are looking now, huh? Look at that, little competition going over by those guys.
They looked up sold them last time I had them. They looked really bad.
They look good, don't they? Yeah, okay.
What color are your shoes? White gym shoes? What's that? No, they're not like you.
Hang on, what's your, stand up, Brian, stand up. Lift your foot up, what shoe you got on?